This is my first time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Regular Session Meeting, Monday, December 5th, 2022, at seven o'clock. Please stand before the committee.
To the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mayor Lindham here, Councilor Page.
Here.
Councilor Kendall.
Here.
Councilor Martinez here. Councilor Payton here. Councilor Sheldon.
Present.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is under the consent agenda versus Resolution 2207, updating the signer list for the Heritage Bank accounts. Resolution 2210, reappointing Heather Lavontay to the planning commission. Approval of December 5th, 2022, City Council Regular Session Agenda. And then the approval of the November 21st, 2022, City Council Minutes. Are there any corrections or addition to the minutes that we need to be aware of? I did note that there was a, just a small little typo. I think you said City Smith. City Smith instead of Councilor Smith.
That don't work. Trysta, you're fired as my free.
I think it's under 9P, Council Report. I really wish no one like Council Pay would ever call that. It's all good. Anything else? All right.
I would move to adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a first and a second any discussion. Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Item six is a public comment. This is the time that we ask the public if they wish to speak on matters not on the agenda. Let the record show that we do not have any members of the public here in the audience at Jesse Mays. However, we do have several folks on Zoom. And this time, do anyone, does anyone on Zoom wish to speak during public comment? If so, unmute yourself. All right, let the record show that there are no comments from those attending via Zoom. And then Lori, have we received anything, an email that you need to make us aware of?
Nothing. Prayer to you to the meeting tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Seven A, we have a presentation this evening of the Public Works Facility Design Update. I know that we had expressed an interest where we wanted to know a little bit more about that and get an update on that. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Andy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, probably two months or so. In person, Jason Graham is online tonight with Process Architecture. Kind of described the project. That's who the city engaged to start the schematic design process for the Public Works Facility out on West Union Road. And working with 3J consulting on some of the civil engineering aspects and some mechanical, electrical, and structural contractors and professionals. We've kind of advanced the design a bit since that time. And when we had the discussion before, I know the council expressed an interest of any, whenever you're kind of reached the end of the schematic design process, come, come and, you know, come again and visit with us and we'll see what the building looks like. So we wanted to take that opportunity tonight. It's not going to take super long. Jason's got a few slides here. It'll go over sort of what the site plan looks like, what the building looks like. And you get into a little bit of the design considerations. Second story, there's a second story there. So, and then kind of talk about the next steps as well. We'll have a topic on next meeting's agenda, December 19th, related to contracting out the next portion and especially contracting out for construction in 2023. So they'll touch on that a bit too. So Jason, I'm going to share the screen here and let me know if you see everything. Got that?
Let's see. Yeah, that's looking right. So I can just take it away, Andy. And then if you can kind of click through, I'll just, I'll just say when to go to the next slide. But good to virtually see everybody again. Jason Cameron, Process Architecture. As Andy mentioned, we're now at the completion of our schematic design phase for the Public Works Facility. What you have on the screen right there is an overall rendering of the site for where the design currently is. We tried to capture, or we tried to visualize the entire site for the council to see. So we had taken the original kind of conceptual plans that were done a couple of years back. And we've made a couple tweaks to them, worked with Andy and Andrew in the Public Works Department as well as 3J to kind of find some efficiencies in the building. We are still utilizing mass timber, which we can kind of get into a little bit more in the presentation. But we ended up laying out the site, as you can see, so that you, you still have the large yard. There's some lay down areas for a lot of the equipment for easy loading and unloading. We prioritize kind of the approach from the street, which we'll see in some other slides, but also separated the parking. So you're going to have a public parking lot in the front where you'll, you'll no longer need to have access to get through. That'll just be right up front. And then we'll have secure storage and parking in the, in the rear. That's kind of what you're seeing right there. So we can probably jump to the next slide. And I'll probably go through these fairly quickly, just for the sake of time. And then I'll, I'll backtrack if there's any questions. So here is the, the site plan north is going to be on your, on your left plan. Plan west is north. But this kind of depicts exactly what the rendering was just showing. Yeah, you can see where the building is, or it says four bay storage office. We're still building that into the, we're, we're using the existing berm that was created when the water storage tower project was complete. So we've, we've done some quick analysis with 3J and uncovered that it's probably more cost efficient to leave the berm where it is. So that was a good, smart move when, when you guys had done the water storage facility. You can see how parking is spread out throughout the site. You still have a fairly large working yard for the Public Works Department for all their projects. And we're going to have good accessibility for any, any public that are going to come to this building with those stalls on the, on the west, which is planned south, which with a handicap accessible pathway right into the front door of the building. Could probably go to the next slide. So this is color coded. This is the first floor plan. So you can see it didn't change tremendously from the, from the conceptual plan a couple of years back. We still have four bays, high, high ceiling bays for, for the equipment. There's going to be a storage area, which you can see those kind of racks in the middle. This is in the olive green portion. Fire riser, electrical room, janitorial closet in the middle. So all the, the building services will be in the middle to minimize some runs. The, of lack of a better word, kind of the teal color that you see, that is going to be all office space. So we have a, a rough furniture layout in there, which you kind of see depicted in there as well. First floor will have so two private offices and an open office area as well as a break room with some residential appliances. We'll have three toilet rooms, two of which will have showers for the crew. So they can, they have direct access right from the shop space right into the showers. We have a small entry area and there is a fairly large conference room on the first floor. The change, the, the, that we had talked about in the initial discussion a couple of months back was that we added a second story to the building. So you'll see there's an elevator and staircase also. Now that obviously takes you to the second floor. And that's going to be centered or positioned right in the main, near the main entry. Yep, right where the mouse is kind of hovering over. So we can go ahead and skip to the next slide. And second floor is mostly going to be office space. And then you have the elevator and another toilet room, obviously. For now, we've, we've test fit this because this sounds like it'll be a landing spot for the city offices when there's a renovation to the, to the existing facility. So we have a test fit in there with several private offices as well as a conference room and a fairly large open office area with a workspace directly behind the toilet and elevator. This currently, right now, the stair is going to be open to below. So you'll be able to have a nice entry when you walk in. So it'll be a nice inviting space for anyone that's coming either to work or to visit the offices here. And then while we're on this slide, you can kind of see the roof plan for the shop space. Right now, we are showing, we have a, a additive alternate with solar panels that are going to be positioned all along the south of the building. So you can kind of see that matrix that, of all those rectangles on the south building, those are proposed solar panels. And then the, the rectangles right above that are some skylights that we're looking to add into the shop space for natural light. So it's going to limit your lighting loads in that building as well too. We can jump to the next slide. So here is a rendering. We have a full walkthrough that we've shown Andy where you can actually walk through this building. But this is a quick look into the shop space. So you can, you can see we're utilizing the mass timber in this building still. What that is, is you have cross laminated timber, CLT. That's in a slab form. So we're looking at three plies or five plies. We're still working through that right now. But that is a sustainable building material that, that there is a number of reasons why this is a good solution for this, this project. But you can see that it's going to be a very warm space in there, very resilient. It's heavy timber for the columns and beams. And then you see the mass ply, the, or excuse me, the cross laminated timber slabs for the roof structure up above. You also have a lot of natural daylighting in this area. These crews are going to be working all times during the day. So we want to bring in as much natural light as we can. And we're also showing some large fans, a lot of circulation of air in that space as well too. Next slide, please. Thank you. Here's just some exterior elevations, so you can kind of get a feel for what the building will look like. We used really simple forms to, to keep the building cost efficient while we're looking at the cross laminated timber design. Large eve overhangs in front of the overhead doors. So if, if the crew have their trucks kind of halfway in, halfway out, or if they want to leave the doors open when it's raining or snowing, they can do so. Two distinct entrances, one in the front for the public facing side and one in the rear for kind of staff circulation in and out fairly quickly. That's those two depicted by those brown areas on the, on the building. And then if you go to the next slide, I think we have some renderings that kind of show this a little bit better. So here is the main entrance off of the street. So you can see the striping on the ground. That's the, the handicap parking stall. So anyone entering the building will be coming from the parked cars on the left. They'll be able to access the building directly right into the front. Still utilizing the berm. So you can see the berm in this photo as well too. We wanted to really position this building into the landscape that's there right now and definitely integrate that well. And for materials, you know, we're looking at utilizing very resilient materials. So we've got some, primarily it's going to be metal panel building and heavy timber. And then you've got some wood accents on the front too, along with some signage that's, you know, quick to identify the, the entrance on this building. Go to the next slide. So here is a shot from the rear in the yard. So this is looking back at the building. So you can kind of see this is how we, we anticipate some of the crew using, using the facility. Big, large yard. They have, you know, fairly, fairly large equipment to move around. But this will give them plenty of space. And then if you go to the last image, we know that they, they, they work, you know, all times during the day. So get a good shot at night and, or in the morning or in the evening when they're working. You can kind of get a good look at some of the lighting, the pack lighting and, and how this, how the space will feel warm on the interior when they're with all the, the cross laminated timber. So a good, good resilient place for, for them to work. And I kind of breezed through that pretty, pretty quickly. So I don't know if we want to, we can kind of talk next steps, or I'm happy to answer any questions on the design of the layout. However, you guys want to handle this part.
Jason, thank you so much for that presentation. I just caught an observation and I'm sure there's a really specific answer. But I noticed there were no windows on the east side of the building. Is there a reason for that?
If you go back to the site plan real quick, I think it's probably the second slide. Yeah, the east side is going to be on the top. So, so the, so north is, is planned west on this. We didn't, because we, because we have the berm right there, we didn't put too many windows in that location. But you also have the skylights that are running on the, the south portion of the roof. And then we have some glass on the overhead doors as well too. And then on the south side, we also have some windows that are built into the, the wall there. Yeah, actually, if you go back to that, that interior image might help. You can kind of see, yeah, you can kind of see some windows on that side. But the discussions that we had is there's going to be some high pile storage and the, and Andrew noted that they'll, they'll have some storage along that, that wall back there, the south wall. So we didn't want to load up too many windows along that wall. Yeah.
We noticed we were going to have some space over here as we decide to make this an outdoor cover kind of additional storage area at the large.
And they may be doing, they, they had requested, they do some light welding there too. So that area over on that side, that east side would be covered for welding also. Did that answer the, the question? I was trying to run, run through it with the different images that hopefully we.
Has a question.
The dimensions of the office space. So I'm just curious what the square footage is for full office space.
That's a good question. So we've got about 2,400 square feet on the ground floor of office space. And then on the second floor, we added about 2,200 square feet.
That compares to how much we have now.
And essentially what we did from the original plan, the, the building was about 10,000 square feet. Right now, we're at about 11,800 square feet. So we got a little more efficient with the office, but then we had to add some more square footage for the elevator and the staircase. So while, while the building grew with adding the second floor, it didn't actually grow in a linear fashion to add that square footage. We, we had a little bit more efficiency.
Other questions or comments?
Sure. I, I don't know that I have any questions. I think architecturally, I think we're there. I'd like to see us, I don't know whether we've ever discussed this, but that we think about the thematic elements through the architecture, through all of the buildings that we might build someday. And I think more about this facility and what it's going to become, because it's going to be a lot more than where we're at today. I mean, we're operating out of a 20 by 40 building, basically with really pretty limited facilities for the most part. So it's something we're going to grow into and certainly on the office side. You know, my thought is, okay, well, if we're going to have 4,400 square feet, then maybe we should be thinking about temporary council chambers, because I don't, I don't know that we're going to get a city hall built inside of 10 years now. Maybe, maybe that's true. I don't know. But I think as far as the layout, I mean, I'd want to see a lot of details. There's, you know, but as far as the initial feel, I think it looks good. I think you need two elements of egress out of the facility. I think you could have an additional drive around the back when you're talking about larger equipment, articulated equipment. There could be another out, out behind the canopy area that maybe the canopy comes more to the east and the, another outlet goes out there. I think that might be beneficial because the minimal amount of backing is probably going to be the best for this kind of facility. Because you don't have a drive through bay. And I'm assuming those are 12 by 12 foot doors, but that's just looking at it.
Yeah, that's a good comment. The, we talked with Andrew about the need for, if a lot of these vehicles do need to drive through. So we had positioned the building at one point, kind of in the middle of the site. He said, most of the, most of the work they do, well, all the work they do wouldn't actually require them to drive through. So that was something we discussed really early on, actually with them. So I'm glad you brought that up. And then 3Js are civil engineer in this project. They do auto turn calculations within this, within the yard to make sure all these vehicles can make certain turns that they need to make. So those are definitely things that we had looked at. In terms of egress, we have, I think currently we have a four paths of egress in here right now. So we have two in the shop space and two in the office. So we're, we're doing well from an eager standpoint also. And it's, you know, fairly easy direct access to the public way, which is great. So all, all great comments though.
I do, and part of my egress had more to do with the exterior access. It looked like you had plenty of egress out of the building from a square footage standpoint. I would question that, but it's just my thought is you got one way in and you got one way out. You know, my thought is out of the back part of that lot, you have another way out. Because in a lot of cases, you're going to have wheel cuts on vehicles that, for Public Works, that are different than a regular wheel cut on a custom, even a custom truck. But when you get back trucks and some of those things, those wheel cuts, if they're not taking those counts, those are, those are somewhere around 50 to 70 foot turning circles. So you're going to take a lot of room up in that lot. And my thought is, okay, you have another way out. Maybe you circle out or you have a way to circle out of that lot and then exit instead of backing, turning, backing, turning. That's, you know, that's down the road a ways, but that's just from a, you know, 1,000 foot view standpoint.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can certainly circle back, have 3J look at that. If, if we want to do something like that and add another, you know, kind of a loop where you can pull around. Yeah, and I, and during our next presentation, what we could do is, is actually have some of their information on how those vehicles maneuver on there. I, I do know that they're, they're tracking that in the background, but you bring a good, a good point, because there's going to be 53 foot trailers that are unloading, you know, pipes and conduit coil, all that type of stuff on here.
I have a question. Why are there three bathrooms on the first floor?
That's a good question. So we started originally with two. And we did add a third one, because if we could go back to the floor plan real quick. Yep, perfect, thank you. So you'll see two of them. It might be, it might kind of be hard to see. I don't know how well you guys can see on your screen. Two of those toilet rooms are facing the little corridor right there. So both of those have showers. And what we wanted to try to achieve was to leave those as back of house space. And if there's, you know, vendors or, you know, the, the visitors from other jurisdictions of the public, anything like that, they're going to have a front facing toilet room that's accessible from pretty much directly kitty corner from the staircase. So someone could feasibly go from the conference room to the toilet room pretty quickly and then back without having to go to the back of house spaces or, you know, see a, see a shower room or something like that. That's quite frankly, just a back of house space. We did add a, another toilet room is on the, the second floor as well though too. So if that does get outfit as office space in the future, there's going to be a toilet room up there. So you, you wouldn't have to go to the first floor, use the restroom and then head back up there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Jason, is that upper floor, is it all closed man? The whole office floor on the center floor?
Is it, I'm sorry, is the upper floor what?
Is it all closed man? I mean, there'd be no rooms up there. We just an open for future development.
So that's a good question. So what we did, we, we had a cost estimate done and we pulled it, we did an additive alternate for the second floor. So if you could go to the next slide there. What we did was we priced it out as the base for just a core and shell at the second floor. That would have the elevator, the toilet room and, and just that kind of entry wall. And then we did another study, cost study, building that floor out as shown right now, just to get a general idea. You know, there, there is, there is some merit in, if, if the city already knows how this space might get utilized for a temporary kind of outfit while the, you know, some new facilities are being done. There's some merit in just building this right now, while, you know, you have a GC and you have the pricing and all that type of stuff. But we did pull that out. So we have both options in our cost estimate currently.
Okay, good, looks good, yeah. Oh, we're doing it. Can't get it done any cheaper.
And as we go to the next phases too, this is just our stab that we took at it at this point. So three private offices, conference room, open space. We can tweak this a little bit. It's not going to move the needle on cost too much unless we start, you know, infilling with a lot of private offices and things like that. But yeah, there's some wiggle room on that, that second floor right now. And, and right now it's showing about nine, you know, workstations for nine people. We could do a couple of different layouts and, and, and get in probably two or three more desks in there.
What's next after the schematic design?
So next would be, that's a good question. So next is, we would go into what's called a design development phase. You'll, you'll notice we didn't show too many interior shots other than just the shop space. So we do have those kind of laid out. The design development phase would really be taking what we know from our cost estimate, from your guys' comments here, applying that to the, to the building design and then starting to really select materials and show material boards and further the interiors, quite frankly. And then we start to do coordination with our consultants. So they've done just enough work to get a fairly fine tooth cost estimate. But there's going to be some coordination and some product selection and things like that in the design development phase. After that, we would go into a construction document phase, once everything to the design is approved. And then from there, it'd be, it'd be bidding and, and permitting. And then also to kind of tack on to that, and Andy may have, he, he kind of touched on a little bit. We are looking at a CMGC, which is, which stands for Construction Management General Contractor. We're looking at a CMGC approach to deliver this building. And what that would mean is in early January, we would be interviewing general contractors to come on board sooner than, than what a traditional delivery method would be for when you kind of wait for your, towards your building permit submission and things like that. It speeds up the construction process, which, which can save, which can save money by bringing a contractor on board. They start to secure, they, they do their procurement early. And so they lock in pricing six to eight months before this other, a traditional delivery method would be. So that's kind of all tangled in the next steps. It would be going to design development. So that's kind of all tangled in the next steps, it would be going to design development and then also trying to find a general contractor partner to come aboard. Um, and really start to lock in pricing and, and start buying things out. Um, cause there's, there are still some lingering procurement issues that are going on with, with certain elements.
I'm just that curious about the two bathrooms with showers. How often do, is, is that something that's standard or uh? Uh, the uh.
I would say it needs to be there.
Well, one would be there, in case, in case you have something that has to split on you, but you also have the. The uh, do we have a, do we have to see that washes, I mean, is it just, why do we have two showers, is that, is that commonplace?
I would say it's, it's commonplace, but we gotta think about growth, this facility is going into the future, like. Thirty years, so we gotta think about the growth, the growth in the crew as we get more people on board. Um, I mean, those are assumptions, I would think, and that's part of always my concern about a project like that because. Yeah, I'm a project manager, but uh, is always looking ahead and looking far ahead. And, you know, making sure that you're covering where you're at, not just what you're doing today, but what you're planning on.
Would city showers be installed in there in criminal, those seven, we use put in there at, at, at Hock? Let's see the showers, like I washes and uh, where does he showers, cause you get a chemical on you or something, you wouldn't use the uh. The bathroom shower.
Yeah, there's, there's I wash stations that would be.
There, are they, are they built in, are they portable?
I mean, this is schematic design, we haven't gotten to that detail yet, but I mean, we have them in each pump house, so this would be kind of standard. And just to tack on to Councilor's point, I mean, one of the beauties of this is. Getting in finally, you know, a, a grant from the state to be able to just. Think even further ahead than maybe we would have been able to do has been a, a real benefit, um, because it's allowed us. Adding a second story, just adding more space, adding another bay. Um, and then even adding some more space in the yard to some covered storage areas, although it's been kind of a blessing to be able to know that. You know, we, we wouldn't have been able to do that otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to start a project for a couple more years otherwise, so. It's been, been pretty good, and then, you know, we think using the, that, that Jason described, C N D C. To bringing contractors on board, it's almost like a design build process, but kind of even. Actually even quicker than that, and, and a lot of cities are utilizing that approach and kind of, uh, good luck with it. And if we're using mass timber, um, it's good too, because it's a specialized material, and frankly, the mass timber is gonna be cheaper than steel is. And it's, it's lighter, it's, I think it's one of the main reasons, and so. What about, what are concerns right now that we talked about, and then I'll, I'll shut up, we talked about a couple of weeks ago, it's just. The geotech report and seeing what the soils look like there, so we'll, we'll get that refined here probably three weeks or so. But we're hoping it's not as, it won't have to have the same sort of um, treatment as the reservoir is, uh. Which, you gotta plan for two million gallons of water, you know, which this won't have nearly the weight, so what else?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, Andy, hopefully that, that underground doesn't happen, cause we got no place to put it. You know, we're out, we're, it's gonna cost a lot more money, so hopefully this will be an okay uh, results, that's what's coming up.
Yeah, we've got some, Andy shared some preliminary or some geotech reports for the, the school that was completed. And we've ran those, granted, it's not the same site and it's, it's a different building type, but we ran those by our structural engineer. And he did give us a preliminary thumbs up that, um, you know, we're, we're, we're heading in the right direction. Um, we, we obviously won't know until the, the full geotech analysis comes back, but. Um, the, it may not be as impactful, the soil condition as impactful for this building as it was for the, the water storage project. So that's, that's preliminarily, we've got some good news from our engineer.
Great, Jason, thank you very much for the report, um, uh, it definitely gave, uh, I think many of us got some good. Um, information from it and really appreciate your time, so, uh, looking forward to next step.
Great, thank you, and then if there's any further questions, you know, run them through Andy, and he, he can, you know. Push them our way and we're happy to, uh, happy to help.
Sounds great, thank you so much, Jason.
Thank you all very much.
All right, on to our resolutions, um, so we have two resolutions that we are, um. Uh, that are on the table tonight, resolution number two, two, zero, eight, which is the P G E franchise agreement. And then our solution two, two, zero, nine, which is the ARPA funds, so I will turn this over to you, Andy, for the first one.
Two, two, zero, eight, um, can you recall back in September, we passed a council, the government ordinance to. Give us a little more time to work on the P G E franchise uh, agreement. Um, main reason we did that is because the previous city attorney Spencer was, was working with. Myself and P G E folks, and their attorneys on this throughout the spring and the summer, when he left, we needed to get someone else, we'd be else, we're caught back up to speed. Um, so that's, that's the short of it, the long of it, you know, is a franchise agreement for P G E is just so they could provide electricity, power. Um, street lights, those services in the city, the franchise agreement itself just sort of outlines, uh, what they can, they can't do by providing that. Um, utility service to the city, especially outlines some of the, what they can do in the city's right of way, what they need to contact us, maybe they can do work there. Um, whose burden is it to move power poles, power lines, especially during construction projects? Um, such the franchise fee that they have to pay to use the right of way and provide that service. Uh, but it, but it is, um, it's a twenty year agreement, they've probably been operating in more things for. Uh, one of the that, um, the existing one was ten years, but that went into twenty years. Um, with the minister, I mean, the next council, whatever, it's the same people here, uh, from doing this again. And for the, for the most part, there weren't very many substantial changes from the existing agreement, just outlining some things that. Outdated over ten years, um, incorporating some, you know, language related to, um. Five G, Microcell, or what happens, they have to attach those to their poles and, um, things of that nature, but. Not, not a lot of changes from, um, not a lot of material changes from the uh. Agreement wasn't placed, so this one, back to back, we go to July one, and it lasts until, uh.
Any comments or questions for Andy?
I noticed in uh, section three, uh, three C eleven, the joint call use, that's been. That's not tied for the gross revenues, so they, if P G U franchises something else out. On goals, those fees did not bless. She says grantee is a.
Yeah, yeah, that was a question that came up, and this is, um, it's, it's a question that is circulated, um, amongst the city managers and. Forums that I've kind of been paying attention to, to, the way that it was explained to me and the way that we entered. Sort of the city attorney is, the gross revenues, um. Is that, that the franchise fee itself will return to the city, a percentage of their gross revenues included in their gross revenues. From the city would be if they were collecting the revenues from using their poles for Microsoft.
Uh, so it says gross revenues do not include persons from cell bonds, of course, mortgages, or other events of indebtedness.
Oh, oh, nice, the revenue from joint call use.
That's explicitly put in there that it will not.
Yeah, um. I don't have a great answer of, of why that's not included, um.
So they do five G to polls or are they using polls or anything bad, they get to put on money?
It may be exempt for them, but it might not be exempt from the other part.
Right.
You can't just paint things on those poles.
Yeah, we think the, the city would still collect franchise revenue for the telecom on the pole.
Like Comcast would have to pay for that asset to be on that pole. It's in our right of, so they, no, there ain't no free passes.
So gross revenue is not, also does not include revenue on all of the cell phones and stocks and.
Right, cause it's meant to be revenue generated within the city, so I think.
The purpose of this franchise, revenue from joint call use includes any revenue collected by the grantee, or speaking. From other franchises, permits, or licenses from the city, the rights to attach wires, cable, or other facilities or equipment. To grant these poles, or place them on the, uh, cards. So they're supposed to say as they can.
Well, and, and this is where, so I'm trying to. Page nineteen of that document, so eleven there.
Just, just search drink.
So, whatever the franchisee is, um, providing a telecommunications service, the city would collect the franchise. Fee from that revenue, but, or the revenue. That P G E may be collecting from another, um, entity, that's be excluded.
Do we have an example of that?
No, I don't think one exists, and that's maybe it's excluded right now.
What would be if a, in a situation where you have, you would have a party renting from another party, their property. To have access, so the actual asset that they hang on there would be franchise, that would be collected under the franchise that it falls under. Not necessarily the revenue that the franchisee might have in their, in other words, their rent. To that part is the way I understand it, and I don't think that changes. I think we can't control what they do as part of renting to that other franchisee, but that other franchisee has to pay. I know they have to pay for fees for whatever assets they hang on those, in the, in this case it'd be a pole. It's my knowledge.
That's correct, yeah, thanks for stepping in there, because, um, that was the exact discussion we had back in the, back in the day, and that's how. Uh, Chris would be engaging, explaining to me, but right now, I don't think there are examples, um. I mean, not in the communities, there, there may be some, maybe in Portland, but it just hasn't been the small cell stuff that.
Any other comments or questions on this, on resolution number two, two, zero, eight? I will enter to your motion.
I moved to adopt resolution two, two, zero, eight to approve the utility, utility franchise agreements. Important, general electric.
Do you have a second? Second, all right, we have a person and second, any discussion? Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, hearing none, motion carried, thank you. Um, next resolution is two, two, zero, nine, it's the ARPA funds, um. We have a brief uh, presentation on this last meeting, Andy, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
It's kind of neat, um, this was just in the bottom line, the work session, um, a couple of weeks ago at that meeting. Um, and, and you had asked, right, so to have a way to memorialize this, so this is a resolution, kind of putting into a stone tablet. In other words, um, sort of leave the, uh, the spending plan for ARPA. And what we said back then, and we tried to make it clear in the, in the staff report, this is basically just putting certain parameters out there. That we staff can set up some, uh, accounts, some accounting, some sub funds, and then it's, um. These things are always subject to change, my plan would be to give the council probably an update on what's happening here every four to six months. Some of these things may happen quickly, like, um, you know, trying to get some of the materials or public safety, things like that, others may. Take two years, uh, which is the life of the, uh, which is the life of the remaining funding. Um, so anyway, that's the, that's sort of the, um, the parameters for the, the plan as presented, and we'll just give the council an update of that.
Appreciate that update and appreciate that we are memorializing it, um, any comments or questions?
I'll move to, uh, approve the resolution two, two, zero, nine. For the allocation and distribution of ARPA funds. For the city of North Platte.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, hearing none, motion carries, thank you. Um, item number nine, A, then it's, uh, city manager report. Any questions for Andy regarding his report? Specific highlights you wanna?
No, nothing, nothing, major.
Can I make this one? Of course, I noticed on West, I mean, a commercial street that, I think finally, everything's gone.
End of, uh, end of November, yeah.
So, that's a very positive. I feel better today, look, last night, I get, you still had some stuff there, but.
There's still some cleanup happening today, too.
So may, mayor? Yeah, I met the people last Sunday, they were having a little party down there, the new owners, and I knew quite a few people in there, so. Pretty, pretty positive what's going on, but take a while, clean that mess up. Living very positive. People that live in the hellish area, they're bought it, so, great. Couple of them, maybe fifty years old.
Well, um, it will be, um, something, um, let's have on the eyes. All right. Any council reports, anything pressing on your mind?
No, I, I guess the only thing I would have is that I have to apologize, I didn't give a heads up to the economic development committee. I think it was in the liver, the liver second fee, and I had something come up in the last minute, I didn't make the meeting and I didn't. I normally send out something to Lori, so I didn't do that, but I will happily take up, uh. I believe, I'm twelve seven, you have development, development, I'll take that, twelve seven for the backup.
Um, actually, I, uh, which kind of jumps ahead, but, um. I cannot attend the January fifth economic development.
I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I know Lori put out, uh, January twenty twenty-three, um, the, the meeting, um. For the month's meetings, and I know that we have, I believe, a U G B cap meeting on that night, so I'll be at that, so I appreciate that.
Or that would be a Thursday. Usually sort of Tuesday, Tuesday or Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, any other council reports?
No, I'll go ahead and send out, Murray, my schedule, it's every given Wednesday, right, so I'll send you the schedule.
Yeah, I've gotten rickies, I've gotten, I got restless tonight, I'll just look over it. So, sitting yours and then the rest all, kind of fill in, give us for the first couple of months and then. Guys all want to check your vacation schedules.
Yeah, okay. Andy?
I apologize, I, I did, I did miss something, um. Yes, so it would have been Friday or Thursday or Friday, I did send out an email to everyone about the, um, kind of the community service. Survey that we've been working on as a staff, working with the brand, to try to do that. We haven't done one of these in my time here, and I, I, I feel terrible for this, that we haven't done that, but this is something I wanna, wanna do on an annual basis. I think we align really well with the goal set. But this is something I want to, want to do on an annual basis. I think we align really well with the goal setting that council's been doing. Try to prioritize, uh, some things in the city going forward. Um, we wanted to keep it sort of simple. We modeled it on, uh, what a few other cities have done, but obviously kind of put some things in there. We definitely want to know too, from a library standpoint or police standpoint of a work standpoint. Um, if you have any comments, let me know now. Let me know in email. I would love to try to kick it out. We were thinking about wait till the beginning of the year. Frankly, we, we felt good enough about it. I, I wanted to try to get it out within the next week or so. Maybe we can try to catch it from the holiday push. And that way, once we get into January, maybe that fit part of January, that's the feedback, things like that. Then we could leave it open for a couple of months. I didn't want to have to wait another month to do it if it was I could have to go. We wanted to try to design something to, if people less than ten minutes to do. Several of us did it.
Yeah, I went through it. I went through it yesterday. It was about eight minutes long.
So it's an actual survey. I looked at it, but I did not go into it. I didn't have time.
Yeah, I went through it. It's really cool. It's a good bunch.
I can have it to you before, if you want.
I'll do it. I'll do it. I'll take a look at it.
A look at it, but I mean, I can look at that tomorrow. I'm sort of looking at that. No, I think it, you know, I think it's a, it's a good start. I think it's going to be, uh, be great. You know, you get the feedback, you get, uh, feedback from folks to, um, there's some good questions in here. Um, so yeah, I think, I think you both did a good job putting that together.
Well, I'll, um, give you a little bit of time for sure. Um, we'll give it till, I don't know, Wednesday or Thursday or something like that. Folks can get back to me. Yeah, maybe thirty questions, but once you start getting into, yeah.
Should droop balls just though.
Yeah, or, yeah, it's.
All the above.
Excellent.
Yeah, I mean, there is some, it's no ranking one through ten or anything. It's just sort of like, is this a priority?
So you just want a little bit of feedback on the types of questions.
Yeah, or is there anything, you know, that we're missing, something obvious?
You missed it. You got thirty.
We have a lot more. I mean, definitely cut some out.
Just do it four or five times here with four or five questions.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we'll do one of those too, more targeted, but, um, anyway, yeah, also another, another reminder, email tomorrow, just to say, hey, give us some feedback. I missed you, the council. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, sure. Um, I don't have anything to report other than I will be heading to, um, uh, College Grove on Thursday, uh, for the final, uh, Oregon Mayor's Association Board of Directors meeting. And then after that on Friday, um, going to Salem to meet with, um, House Speaker, um, Dan Rayfield. Um, not only am I going to have a few minutes with him just to talk about the Oregon Mayor's Association, like the homelessness task force. Um, but I'm going to, uh, try to give him a high level intro to North Plains. Uh, just so that he can put us on his radar. If he hears, you know, UGV expansion coming down the pipe or anything like that, then he's, he at least can put a name and face together with North Plains and, and what we're, what we're doing. So that's all I have to report so far. Big deal. Looking forward to it. So, yeah. And then I think, um, a few of us are headed down to Portland on Monday, December twelfth for the Oregon Business. Is that? Oregon, yeah. Business thing. Um, yeah, so that's about it. Um, if there's nothing else, I know we do have an executive session that I will go into for a few.
One question. Are we going to do something for the next? Council meeting?
Yeah. So we do have a few things on our agenda, uh, to, to work through. We'll have a session. And then we'll, uh, on social.
Yeah, well, the work session at six, we're going to talk about how long it may take. Maybe we start the council meeting. Thirty-six, forty-five, looking at, yeah. I know the sheriff's office is going to be here because they wanted to give a presentation in the, in the year. And then staff reports, some, I'm sure these get modified, we just say, we need to be three, four, save it till January. So we can save some time in there. Yeah.
Yeah, I think. All right. Well, at this time, um, we'll go into, we'll have to go into our executive session. And Lori, I know that you have some, something to read. Thank you. The city council will now be in executive session under ORS one, nine, two, uh, six, six, zero, parentheses, two, parentheses, E, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Only news media representatives and staff designated by the city council are permitted, permitted to attend the executive session. News media representatives, staff and council members are respectfully directed not to report on any of the discussions that occurred during the session, except to state the general subject as previously announced. The council will return to regular session if there is a need for action on the executive session item. No final action or decision may be taken in executive session. The materials distributed will be collected by the city recorder at the end. If there is a need to reconvene in regular session, we'll open the doors and invite any couple back in at that time. I do not. Um, the person online on Zoom, M I K E A. Uh, if you're not part of the news media, um, you do have to, uh, click off.
So I, uh, Mike A, this is the, uh, Andy, the city manager. At this time, we're going to remove you from the room. I'm not sure if you're at the computer or not, but we're going into an executive session and it's closed door. Probably be out of it a little bit later still.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to pull up a presentation here.
Thank you, we're.
Pause it or stop it.